Thanks so much Renee and Joanne for joining us today. We would love to hear a little bit more about why you guys are running for, why you're running for Portland City Council Position 3 and why you're running for reelection. And if we can start off by, Joanne, if you go first and tell us a little bit about why voters should vote for you.
Yes. First, thank you so much for inviting us to come today. Voters should send me back to Portland City Hall because I've been able to actually make systems changes in my short time there. I understand that voters are angry because our city's a mess still. But because of my good work, we're on the path to actually having a much better city than when I took office. So as an example, Portland Street Response is the first change to our 911 response center in over 100 years. And it's going to do a lot to improve our community safety system. It actually relieves police so that they can actually do their job, which is to solve crime because of the high rate of gun violence. Community members are angry and they should be angry because of the amount of money we're spending on housing. We still have thousands of people suffering on our street. They should send me back because I know how to work at the state, federal, and regional level to get the resources we need to collectively work to help the city come back. And not just come back, not just some of us come back, but I think we all should be able to come back.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Renee?
Well, thanks so much for having me. You know, I'm running because I'm deeply concerned about this city. We're facing a crisis in livability that have not seen in our adult lifetimes for many of us. There's real fundamental challenges in our ability to retain families, to retain residents, to retain business in the city right now. And I believe we need a real material reset on how we frame issues, how we go about solving them. So it was a degree of sadness that I'm running that our city is in the situation it is. I was not on a path towards running for something at this point in my life until really saw what was happening before us. So I'm very, very focused on the core livability issues of the externalities created by our inability to confront the unsheltered problem on our streets and crime. You know, there are some other pieces in the city that we need to reset on, but those are fundamentally what I'm focused on, to stabilize the city, to prevent future flight to suburbs, to other cities. And, you know, I'll break down the pieces in terms of where I think we need to focus there. Got to be data-driven. I think we look at Multnomah County data on the unsheltered. It makes some pretty clear picture in terms of the segments in the unsheltered population. And I'm sure we'll get into it in the questions and answers, but we need to designate solutions towards those various segments that are responsive to the actual issues facing each of them. Crime, we don't have enough police. We have a weak criminal justice system that does not center sufficiently victims or the concept of justice. And we will always need strong police oversight and accountability. It is a cornerstone of a free democracy. It is essential. But in our political rhetoric, we've gotten out of balance in terms of the language that will attract and retain good police officers to the city and holding them accountable. We can do both at the same time. And right now, we're not attracting enough police officers to the city. We're having a hard time recruiting and we need to do a better job getting the good ones to come to work here. You know, general background, I've been a private sector leader my entire professional career. Big law firm, big company in both the legal leadership and the corporate strategy role. Small business owner for much of the last 10 years in both the legal and technology space. Have been citically engaged, library foundation, Portland Children's Museum Board, founded a big youth soccer club and led the statewide efforts to reopen schools in a data-driven way. So I've worked both as a leader and a collaborator and know how to get to three votes and how to hash things out, even very direct conversations to get good outcomes. So I'd leave it at that.
Great. Let's start with public safety. And actually Renee, if you would go first on this question. You already have answered it, and that's, does Portland have enough police officers? But I guess I'm wondering, how much more would you want to grow the current force? And how would you bring people back or bring people to join the staff?
You know, I'd look roughly at what cities our size, the ratio of officers to population is. Why don't we just did a decent analysis, looking at our current ratio, and we're near the bottom. And so as a benchmark, I'd look kind of average for cities our side. Probably 300, 400 would be a target. I'm not going to do that overnight. That's going to take multiple years of investment. There's a budget aspect, and then there is a rhetoric out of City Hall. And I think sometimes the language has been very, made it very difficult to attract police officers to the city. So we just need to calm down a little bit. When there's allegations of police misconduct, we need to create space for process to play itself through, for the allegations to be fully analyzed, but in a disinterested and calm way. And at times, the rhetoric out of City Hall has been divisive on that issue, has added flames to the fire. It's a part of its calmness, part of its clarifying when they do something great, when they do heroic things on our streets. We need to celebrate that. There's other aspects of the criminal justice system in Multnomah County that make being a police officer very difficult here. You know, the arrest and release is extremely discouraging for police officers. They don't feel that there's adequate prosecution. Once they do arrest, we're looking at ways to address that. One of it is possibly reinstituting municipal court in the city of Portland. We haven't had one for 50 years here. And working through what the budget would look like for a pilot on that. But it would, under state law, you can only prosecute misdemeanors. You can't prosecute felonies. But it would give us the ability to really go after some of the minor property crimes that are really devastating for a lot of Portland citizens. Catalytic converters, car thefts, while that technically can be a felony, you can prosecute it as a misdemeanor. And to disrupt some of the cycles of criminality there, both to provide justice, to support police that are trying to disrupt those things, but it's kind of a rest and release. But also, and we can, may have another opportunity to dig into this, but it can trigger diversion into addiction services. That if you're participating in the criminal justice system and you're, you know, you actually participate, you show up for court, that we get you into the, get the treatment you need. So anyways.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up, but I want to get Joanne in first. Does Portland have enough police officers? Or what do you think needs to happen to kind of improve public safety here?
Well, I think what needs to happen to improve public safety is that we look at the whole community safety network, right? That we created at the city of Portland. Police play a vital role there, but their role is to solve crime. Do we have enough? We don't know yet what the appropriate number of officers should be. And it's not based on population. It should be based on what's the system we're building around community safety. As you know, we've just started hiring some additional PS3s. I'm told that they're going to actually go out, which is what I thought they were going to do initially, which would be the ones that would answer those calls for auto thefts or catalytic converters or other minor incidents where there's no threat of harm to the individual. I want to see us actually build that up, that PS3 force, so that they can do things that don't require somebody with a weapon. So we have PSRs, we have Portland Street Response, we have the PS3s, Public Safety Specialist 3s, and we have police officers, right? And we also have fire and rescue, and we have 911. And so it's a system of communities' safety. And what I have found in my time at the city is that we invest a lot in police, but we don't invest the same equal amount in the rest of the community safety system. And we have to actually invest in all of them, and we've started to do that.
And so in terms of just like the current situation where you have homicides on track to match last year's record, you have a lot of property crime, you have surging car thefts. With that in mind, I guess, how long are you talking about before you have that information to say whether we've got the right mix of personnel?
Well, let me just say that right now we have 740 sworn officers at about. And we have, they have 100 vacancies in their current budget. So if they were able to hire 100 police officers next year, which they won't, we would be increasing the number. I think what we should do before we start putting magical numbers out of the air is actually to hire for the funding allotment that the police currently have. As we do that, we can assess, as the other systems are getting better and getting more institutionalized, we can continue to monitor whether or not we have the right number. But I think it's just, it's not appropriate to just pull a number out of the air based on population or any other dynamics. Because as you know, we are one of the most unique cities that now has the first change to 911 and who responds to a call for someone suffering from mental health. So again, as we're building a system, the police have a vital role, but the role is to solve crime. And it relieves them to go out and solve the gun violence, it relieves them to solve the murders. That's what police job is, is to solve crime.
I do want to follow up really quickly before we go to the next question. But with a municipal court idea, wouldn't you come across the same type of issue of that insufficient number of public defenders?
No. So when you're focused on diversion, you know, literally if someone shows up for court, you reduce it to a violation. It doesn't require a public defender to engage at that point. When it comes to prosecuting it for a misdemeanor, that does trigger the necessity for public defenders. So, but we're hopeful that the bulk of the volume there gets dealt with in terms of violations and diversion.
Thank you. So turn these questions to you. What would you do to change the trajectory, I always trip over that word, the trajectory of gun violence in Portland?
Gun violence is an issue that requires all hands on deck, right? And so using every tool that we have available. So for example, I have actually supported funding and investing in community-based programs that work directly with family members who've been involved in our criminal justice system. I've also worked, this summer in fact, I got approved a million dollars to actually put out into community programs that we knew would help young people actually deal with the trauma that they've experienced over the last couple of years, as well as to address some of the issues that would drive those individuals to be involved in retaliatory actions. And so for me, I think gun violence is really about, as you know, the work we did in Mount Scott, working with neighbors, was really about reducing gun violence in that neighborhood. And I was successful by reducing gun violence by more than 60%. And it was because we listened to the community, we looked at the physical environment, and actually working with the community did a pilot that, as you may know, we were ridiculed about because they thought, oh, the commissioner honestly thinks they can stop gun violence with barrels. But guess what? We reduced gun violence over 60%. Now we have a beautiful community meeting space that the community owns, and they're committed to continuing to have activities in that space. So, and we need those all over the city because what we know is the city's safer when you know your neighbors, when people are out on the street, when people are engaging with each other. At my complex, we know everybody. When they move in, it's like, we have a list. We know who's there, we know who shouldn't be there, and who shouldn't be there, right? So community safety will take all of us during our peace.
But with Mount Scott, wasn't that a situation where you're basically kind of blocking access to people who don't live in the neighborhood? Is that what you want to see replicated in other neighborhoods?
Actually, that wasn't the goal, blocking it for, so that people who didn't live in the neighborhood. The goal was really to actually figure out, how do you stop people from using both the driveway of the church, the convenience store, the park as quick getaway opportunities, right? After gun violence has taken place, right? So the issue was, how do you make sure that you have, and the unsafe conditions that that created, right? Because you can imagine, if you're walking or rolling in the neighborhood and people are speeding through after they've shot off a gun, you actually stand a chance of being injured. And that's what we heard from community members over and over again. But here's the unique thing about people who live in the neighborhood. They actually had been paying attention, and they knew how people travel through after they shot guns in that neighborhood, right? And so walking with them in their neighborhood and actually seeing what they saw gave me the impetus to say, well, let's try this. We don't know if it'll work, but when we did the pilot, we were very intentional about that six-block area, and we monitored it and we evaluated it. And that's why we were able to come back and say, not only will we make this permanent, I was able to get the city council to agree to give me an additional $800,000 to replicate this in three or four other areas of the city. And we haven't decided yet where that will be, but that's the plan.
One other question, too, I had a follow-up in terms of some of the programs addressing youth. Obviously, those programs are needed. We lost a lot of those in the years.
Yes, we did.
But when I talk about trajectory, when I can actually now pronounce the word, you know, that does sound like it's going to expand this. So what, you know, the barrels are a great suggestion in one way that we're looking at it today. But what I think people in Portland are really scared right now to go out in their neighborhood, so what right now?
Well, right, I mean, here's, I'm talking to our legislators right now about, are we really going to send $5 billion out the door when we are last in the country for mental health treatment? When we are almost last when it comes to access to alcohol and drug treatment? What I hope that I can encourage the legislature to do is to actually split the kicker dollars, right? And I believe the voters would support them if they said, we're going to spend a billion for housing all over the state, right, for affordable housing at 60% and below area median income. So we have to be real clear, 60% and below. And then we say, we're going to take another billion, and we're going to invest it in mental health treatment all around the state. We are in desperate need. Today, even when police pick people up and take them to a place, by the time the police is back on the street, the person is back on the street. Because what we know is that there are two questions they ask. And if you answer those questions right, you're right back on the street. We don't have enough beds for people who want them and need them today. And I think for me, it's not something the city can solve by itself, right? So we have to be really strong advocates at the state and federal level to get those resources so that we can invest locally here in Portland.
Let me ask the same question of you. What would you do to change the trajectory of gun violence in Portland?
So it appears that there's two primary clusters of our gun violence in the city. We have largely in the gang communities and on the one hand, and then in our unsheltered camps. They tend to be clustered in these two populations. And so I think there's some correlation between the two, but... So first and foremost, one of the unintended consequences of Measure 110 was to communicate kind of anything goes in the city of Portland and the state of Oregon with respect to drug use. Now, that was, Measure 110 only talks about possession, but it has been interpreted at times by law enforcement and as well as folks outside the state that it's okay to sell drugs in the city of Portland, and you're also not responsible for your behaviors when you're engaged in high drug use. There is substantial speculation that that has attracted forms of organized crime to the city of Portland. And you walk down some streets in Old Town, there are distinct feel when you go around one corner. It's not just someone suffering from psychosis, whether drug-induced or mental illness, that we are witnessing a commercial enterprise of drug distribution on our streets. And so I think that we have to take a very hard law enforcement orientation towards the drug trade in our city for a variety of reasons, including disruption of some of the gang violence that has come about as a result of it. And so that, what does that mean? It's disrupting every part of it. You know, that's if someone's selling hard drugs in the streets of Portland. I don't care where you come from, I don't care your race, you're going to get prosecuted if you're pushing meth and fentanyl on highly at-risk individuals in the city of Portland. So I think there's a direct correlation between the drug trade and that segment of the population, the homicide victims. So the other piece, we, you know, eliminate specialists in gang violence. We've sort of walked that back as a city. That's, I think it's crucially in Portland. They are experts at de-escalating violence. They are experts at preventing the next homicide. And in particular, they know the neighborhoods. They know the individuals that are most inclined in the neighborhood to be involved in a gang. They've been effective in the past of preventing, they don't prevent all crime, but they're pretty good at preventing that second homicide, the retaliatory one. Adequate police force is going to be a component of all of that. A commitment to prosecute those crimes is a piece as well. We're going to have to partner with the county on some of that because some of what we can address is misdemeanors, but you know, there are obviously other pieces that we're still going to have to, and we're going to have to have broader law enforcement partnership. In terms of the unsanctioned camp component of our homicides, you know, I think, I'm not sure we know as well there because of the degree of chaos in those neighborhoods, you know, or in those camps as to what exactly is driving the homicides there. But this is what I would, you know, as an initial hypothesis that we need to kind of bear out. If you look at the segments there, roughly 72% of our unsheltered population came from somewhere else. I think that's the 2019 number for Multnomah County. So that's, we have to double-check it if it was the unsanctioned number or the homeless number. I, we recently did a ride-along with police. There was four different interactions with someone in unsheltered camps that required some police intervention. All four had warrants for out-of-state, had out-of-state warrants. So I think we are attracting a segment in our unsheltered camps. This isn't our mentally ill, this isn't those suffering from addiction. It's not the segment that has been economically displaced by the pandemic and other economic upheaval. I think that in combination with Measure 110, our general reputation, we are attracting a criminal element into our unsanctioned camps. And so I do think we take a lot, you know, harder look at unsanctioned camping. I think that disperses some elements of that. And I, we want to be focused on providing services to those that need services in the unsanctioned camps. But if you are here with a warrant for, in another, you come to Portland and you have a warrant out for your arrest in another state, the door's closed to here. You're not welcomed here. And if you engage in criminal activity, we're going to prosecute you there. And so will that solve all of the homicides in unsanctioned camps? I'm not sure. I think we kind of have to, you know, play that out. But I think the chaos that has been created in our unsanctioned environments is attracting that kind of, that segment. And we need to know who's in our city, we need to know where they came from, and if they have warrants somewhere else. And if they have a history of criminal activity, we need an extra item if they have warrants.
And Joanne, you responded to Renee's comment regarding the, you know, people from somewhere else.
He said 80% of...
Seventy-two. Seventy-two.
And I guess, is that from the 2019 point in time?
I think that is. You know, and that number came to, came from a Street Roots interview where Street Roots was telling me that number. They were comparing the out-of-state for either the homeless or the unsanctioned versus the general population, right? And this is a, this always becomes a policy argument. Are we attracting the unsanctioned or the homeless to Multnomah County? By, you know, and he was, he was making the argument that it wasn't substantially more than the general population. So I was, I'm relying on that number from him. It sounds generally right to me from my last look at Multnomah County's numbers, but I did not independently verify that.
Okay. So let's get into homelessness a little bit more. Are there, and let's start with you Renee. What specific things would you do differently or continue that the city is doing right now?
You know, I think the mayor in 2022 has committed to disrupt unsanctioned camping in particularly difficult situations for the city. You know, that includes bike paths or sidewalks in the way to school. I think he, his office has accelerated enforcing no parking for RVs in certain streets that for nearly two years were, you know, inundated with RVs. So I think the city has started to improve in those areas. I would support it. But at the same time, we need to continue to invest in emergency shelter and safe sleeping spaces because the whack-a-mole problem is real. We sweep a camp and they move down the street. And you sweep them three months later there, and they move back to where they were before. And so the, while I agree that there are some of these unsanctioned camps that we should be disrupting as soon as possible if they're in particularly impactful areas, we have to go hand-in-hand between mandating the unsanctioned camps move and offering shelter. And sometimes that may mean if the 40 to 50 million a year we send to the joint office in homelessness from the city, if that's not actively going towards shelter, we need to think about taking those dollars back as a city level and redeploying those dollars more effectively to address emergency shelter. The other piece, you're all familiar with, you know, Ninth Circuit law and Oregon law. We cannot, from a legal constraint perspective, enforce old, you know, another reminder, it's been illegal in the city of Portland since 1981 to sleep in an unsanctioned camp. We often forget about that, but, but we can enforce that existing law without offering some form of alternative shelter under Ninth Circuit law and now codified to a certain extent under Oregon law. So shelter's got to be a priority to actually enforce our existing law. I also would argue from a humanitarian perspective, I think that we're going to have a difficult time reaching consensus as a city if we're not offering a compassionate alternative to the many who really do need the help. Last but not least, you know, the continued tolerance of so much unsanctioned camping. We don't know who's in the camps, we don't know where they are. It makes it more difficult to provide social services to them. It's why we have to lean in in earnest to get his, to accelerate the process of getting folks into sanctioned camps as best we can so we know who's there, so we can better assess what services they need. And if there's criminal elements there, they need to go back to where they came from or they're going to face the criminal justice system.
Great, thank you. Joanne, same question for you. What elements would you continue or change about the city's homelessness strategy?
I think one of the first things we need to do is clarify in the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, what the city is responsible for and what the county is responsible for. I was a bit shocked to read the intergovernmental agreement that Commissioner Saltzman signed when the joint office was created. And it basically just says, we're going to give you $40 million a year to create this joint office. And so it's really frustrating when I started asking, so like, what do we get for $40 million a year? And basically, all I could find is we get 200 shelter beds and 100 extra in severe weather. I could spend $40 million much more effectively to get a whole host of temporary and permanent housing for people. And so it was very frustrating in my first year to come in and just realize that we basically just said, hey, we're going to give you a check and like, good luck with that. I am working with Commissioner Ryan on the new intergovernmental agreement to make sure that it's clear who does what, and then when would one government or the other need to do something different? Here's what I think we could do tomorrow if we had the political will. We would identify 50 places in the city of Portland where we would say, we will bring in services, garbage, showers for people who camp here. I know that Old Town was safest when Right to Dream 2 was in Old Town. They never had one call for police service. And the reason they didn't was because the people who camp there set the rules and they held people to those standards. I believe if the city had done this a long time ago, rather than sweeping people into neighborhoods, into communities, and making people even crazier because you didn't fix the problem, you just like relocated them to another neighborhood. So we could do that right now if we had the political will to do so. In addition to that, we could use land that we own. I mean, I've been saying, why does the city own five golf courses? I still don't have a good answer as to why we own five golf courses. But I tell you, a couple of them would make great, it'd be a lot of space for a lot of housing people could afford to live in, right? So we have to think creative. And unfortunately, the city is not accustomed to thinking really outside the box, right? But that's why I'm there, because I think outside the box. That's how we got Portland Street Response. And I will continue to think outside of the box and work with my colleagues to try to think bigger. And the city won't fix this alone. We have to have a good relationship with the county chair and a good relationship with the next governor. And I have those relationships already.
I just want to push back on the, this is something that the city could do immediately if there was the will. Commissioner Ryan has been struggling now for quite a while to get six places located. I think we're maybe at two, about maybe to be three, and then the fourth RV park open. So how is it that this would be different? How would it be any faster your way?
Well, I don't know why it has taken almost two years to do four safe villages. I did four during the height of COVID downtown, and it didn't take me two years to do it. I did it in a month, right? So I, you don't have to ask Commissioner Ryan what the challenge is. For me, you know, I know how to get things done, so I go to, I go directly to the sources that I need to go to and actually try to work it out. And so I couldn't answer that for you. I have that same question, right? I know, I was the first person to offer Commissioner Ryan land at the Sunderland Yards and worked with, and me and P-Bot worked with the port to actually do a land transfer temporarily so that Commissioner Ryan would have access to land there for the RV park, right? And again, that was a year ago that I made that happen, so I don't know.
And so your belief is that, for instance, I mean, there is neighborhood pushback about having anything cited anywhere. There's environmental concerns, which is what took the one southeast Portland site that was identified initially off the table. Would you want to suspend some of those requirements? Or how would you work with neighbors to get things? Or how would you work with neighbors to, to get things situated?
Well, first I would, I would say every community will have a camp, right? We're not going to just put it in one community versus another, right? We all, this is our community and we all, we all will share the burden, right? And the benefit of, of having these people in our community. And that's, you know, that's happening right now, but they're not actually being provided with services and supports. I'm happy to see that we're finally actually hiring houseless people to help pick up the garbage rather than actually giving eight hundred thousand dollars to solve, uh, to pick up garbage, right? I mean, I think the city could use the resources we have now much more effectively. But again, I'm not in those conversations.
Okay. I'd like to, we, we may come back on a couple of the homelessness issues, but let's, you know, there's, on the November ballot, there's a measure to change the form of city government, add rank choice voting and create multi-member districts. I'd be interested in hearing what each of you think of, of the ballot measure. And Joanne, if you could go first on that.
Actually, um, I am so grateful to the charter commission who took on the charge very enthusiastically to talk to thousands of Portlanders about how they felt. I will tell you, I will be a yes vote. We need change, I'll be a yes vote.
And you prefer this over an alternative that would just focus on, for instance, the form of government?
I think it's very disrespectful for an elected leader to try to undermine the work of twenty community volunteers who spent a year, what, two years talking to Portlanders about charter change. I would prefer, and I would have if it failed, then I would then be working to find out what parts Portlanders like, what parts didn't they like? And how do we collectively put another measure together and possibly get it on the ballot by the end of next year? I have, I would have no interest in trying to do a countermeasure at the same time that dedicated volunteers are outselling their proposal to voters.
And Renee, what's your position on the charter measure?
Well, I have, first of a question, what happened to the car ride over from City Club? She was a not, you were non-committed in City Club, so it's a short shift. But, uh, um, you know, right now I'm a no. I think it is too complex of an implementation to be done in two years. I wish they had been humbler in what they were proposing. I don't think we have a good track record in the city of implementing anything recently. And to look at such a significant restructuring of government, I don't have a high confidence that we can actually implement something that complicated effectively. In terms of the substance of the proposal, you know, Portlanders are absolutely clamoring for some form of charter reform. Our model of government is antiquated. There is a broad support in some form of charter reform. I think we're all seeing the negative effects of electing folks without management experience to oversee, you know, service city commissioners, which is essentially responsible for overseeing bureaus. And so I, on the one hand, I see widespread, uh, support for changing that model. The current proposal does, you know, has a reasonable proposal in terms of city manager overseeing bureaus going forward. There's pluses and minuses of that. I'm not completely whetted to or against it, but it's a rational approach to the, the problem of getting professional management of bureaus. So I like that piece. I think once you go that direction and we get city commissioners out of overseeing bureaus, geographical representation makes sense, support that as well. I think, you know, the multi-member combined with rank choice voting, not really been done in the United States. We have Cambridge as one example, but it's been excessively rare in stateside. And it is used some, in some places in the UK. I had a, a deep dive with a couple of proponents of the current proposal, really listened to, you know, their study, their analysis of the problem, or analysis of the solution. They made some compelling cases. It's not completely experimental. It has been done in the UK. They cited a number of examples in Ireland and at least Scotland and even New Zealand, if I'm getting that right. But the, um, you know, but it hasn't been done in the US context. It could be very, very expensive when you look at the amount of staff salaries, public match, like the whole, the whole combination. So those are my, my concerns right now. Having said that, I, I, given the, the, the broad support for some sort of charter reform, if MAPS's proposal is supposed to come out next week, um, you know, comparing them side by side and then reassessing after that, which one, you know, I think is stronger, I'll create space for that. I don't know if that's going to change my vote on the current one. But if MAPS's proposal is really weak, the prospect of voting no on this and not having a viable alternative is concerning because I do think we have an antiquated form of government. I think we have a, a broad support for changing that form of government. And to leave Portlanders with no viable options to shoot down, you know, what's proposed now and, and not have a strong alternative that might come on amaze, to me problematic.
Thank you.
Joanne, you oversee the Office of Community and Civic Life and signed off on a massive severance payout to Sucre. Many other city employees and not always bureau heads have also received golden parachutes, even for performance. What do you think about these large payouts to going to departing employees?
Sometimes they cost the city less overall to negotiate settlements for employer E's that are not working out at the city. And I would say Sucre fit in that category. And actually it was something I inherited and had to resolve because, as you know, it was kind of a mess when, when I inherited that bureau. As a rule, I think that, uh, if, if, if someone, if you're asking someone to leave from the position, if their contract doesn't state that there should be a, a agreement, there has to be a reason why. I mean, we don't do that for everybody who quits their job at the city. But for higher level, uh, directors, uh, positions, those positions are really, really, really hard to fill. And I think if you're asking someone to leave, there's a really good reason why you're trying to negotiate a, a, a way to, to, to safely allow them to find, go somewhere else.
And you feel assured that there is that analysis at every level and that the starting point isn't simply how much will we pay?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I know from, yeah, for the, the case that I'm personally, the office I was personally responsible for, yeah, it was not just like, what is it going to take? No, no, no. It was a very thoughtful, um, analyzed, uh, process that we went through to determine what the appropriate payout would be for those individuals to go away. Because as you know, I mean, anybody can sue for anything, right? And so if somebody feels like they've been let go inappropriately, it takes years and years and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in city attorney fees defending those kind of cases. So it's really about how do you make sure you're balancing it so that you're actually using the city dollars wisely in that circumstances?
Thank you. Same question to you, Renee.
You know, it is, it's organizational life, it's a tough trade-off, right? You're looking at your residual legal liability when someone leaves an organization and severance agreements are a way to liquidate that. You know exactly what you have to pay. You get resolution, you get an exchange, a promise that they won't sue you. It, it is a legitimate tool to mitigate organizational liability, including, um, public sector entities. Obviously, um, it is so out in the open and we are using taxpayer dollars to pay that out. It, it is certainly deserving of scrutiny and critique. At the same time, I'm not certain that these payouts were wrong. I wasn't in the, you know, don't know all the facts to, to the situation. Just recognizing that often organizations are left with difficult trade-offs here. We either pay this out now or we have unknown liability that goes on for an extended period of time. And you're hopeful that you're being advised wisely by your in-house counsel and experts in the space that the trade is proper. What I'm uncertain about is, is there dynamics that makes public, in particular, city employees, um, more likely to get really nice payouts than they would get in the private sector? I'm not sure that's the case, but I think it is a question we have to ask. Is there something unique in the political environment that make them, you know, get essentially non-market payouts? I was surprised by some of them where they're voluntary because in my experience, um, there's usually an element of not voluntary where you're, you know, doing those payouts, particularly if it's not pre-negotiated. You know, it's one thing if that was a condition of offer that upon exit you have some guarantees there. Even then though, it's usually there's a specific trigger for that that is outside the control of the employee. So voluntary departure, uh, if that was what it was in reality, it's, it's, you don't see much severance paid in, in the private sector for that, at least in my experience. So I think it, it's worthy of scrutiny. It's worthy of asking the questions we have to. I don't know in this case in particular whether it was the right thing or the wrong thing to do.
Great, thank you. Renee, downtown Portland is, has nowhere near the activity it did pre-pandemic. What, if anything, would you do to change that? And would that involve requiring city workers to come in more times per week than they are now?
Maybe I'll start with the last part for, first. As city commissioner, I'm going to be in city hall either every day unless I'm doing constituent outreach, right? So that's five days a week. The expectation is you are in city hall. The same expectation will be for direct reports, those that you hire upon, that were successful in November, that you are in city hall or you're doing constituent outreach every day, uh, if you're on salary. For more rank and file, I think the trade-offs can be more complicated. I think that anyone who has substantial constituent facing responsibilities, I do think it's very important that they're in the building at least the majority of the time. For other staff, you know, there are some changes in the way people work. I mean, I, my technology company sells cloud services and you ask Microsoft, we all accelerated in about eighteen months what they thought would take a decade in terms of the way people collaborate and the changes that would occur there. I don't know that we should unwind all of those learnings. If there's certain forms of collaboration that we can leverage going forward that's effective, I don't know that we completely throw those pieces away. But city hall's presence downtown to generate economic activity, I don't want to discount it, but there is a responsibility there. And it starts at the top and with city commissioners and their direct reports. When we look more holistically at the challenges of downtown, I mean, one, we've got to stabilize and crime and homelessness are driving away visitors. They're driving away businesses, they're driving away residents. And we're kind of in that order when you're talking about downtown. And, um, we had extensive riots downtown that forever have affected some folks' mindset about it. So first, we got to stabilize it. This place has to feel and be safe. It has to feel and be clean, neither of which is true right now. The, it's cleaner than it was a year ago, I'll give it that. I'm not always sure it's safer, but it is cleaner. And we need to commit there in terms of stabilizing it. That ties to kind of the views on, you know, public safety and, and homelessness, that those are two big contributors to the negative perception and reality of downtown. Longer term, you know, the relative, the relative mix of residents to office workers in urban core, I don't know that we're ever going to go back to two thousand nineteen numbers there. And that doesn't mean twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one numbers are the right one either. I think it may be somewhere in between there. I do think we're going to have to do some hard work projecting out over the next decade to twenty years. What does a urban core look like post-pandemic? Post-acceleration of online collaboration? And what's the optimal mix for the city of Portland going forward? I do think we'll be looking at some conversion of office space to residential. There are substantial challenges to that in terms of the real financial cost of seismic upgrades and this real hard cost of converting a lot of office space to residential. And can't minimize that. City of Calgary's looked at that and said, well, we're going to give developers seventy-five bucks a square foot just to address hard cost conversion. I think we'll have to be creative in assessing that. Not all buildings will successfully, uh, will be good targets for conversion. It depends on your layout and some other pieces. But I think that's probably a part of the more long-term, uh, visioning for downtown that's going to, will change the mix a little bit. It's not abandoning it as an office center, but that over the long haul, it's going to have more residential. One last piece though, um, you know, our arts, our sports, our other cultural organizations downtown are huge drivers of activity and, uh, down here. And the city hasn't always been great at welcoming them. You know, I certainly have heard repeatedly from the symphony that, you know, they do the waterfront, uh, concert the other day and they get a gift card from the city and have to pay out substantial fees. That attracted, you know, arguably thousands of people downtown. And, you know, and, um, so looking at what we can do as a city to really support those economic activities that have real amplifying effect. And, uh, sports isn't perfect, arts aren't perfect, you know, but they, but they do generate a lot of people downtown and energy. And I, so, um, really being strategic in how we support those organizations and that there are, you know, thriving post, post two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Joanne, same question for you. What do you think should be done to boost downtown Portland's activity? And would you, would that include bringing city workers back?
Right now, uh, we work at, I, my office works at city hall twice a week. We are, we as a city have not set a policy yet. We have a committee that's looking at, um, what would be the appropriate number of days to actually require workers to be downtown? And let me just say, everything depends on the job that they do. I certainly have a lot of people in my portfolio that never got a day off, never worked from home, firefighters, maintenance workers, et cetera, et cetera, who just don't have that option ever. But there are a lot of employees that have been able to be very productive from home. What I have encouraged, uh, the committee that's looking at this issue to do is look at how do we incentivize having people want to return to their office space? For example, we know when a Portland building was remodeled, they took away the childcare. And that's one of the biggest inhibitors for people who want to work is having access to quality, affordable childcare. The same with folks who are taking care of elder parents. The city could be innovative and actually really create a, an incentive for those employees, A, that have no choice but to show up every single day, uh, 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 seven days a week. And then for those who have had the privilege of being able to work remotely, to also look for incentives that actually remove barriers. I know one of the biggest barriers is transportation because of both the high cost of gas if you're, if you drive a car and how long you have to ride, like I do, on public transit, right? It is a, it, it takes a while, right? And so that's what I think we should be doing as a city. We should be applauding those employees that had no choice but showed up and did their job and did it well. And B, we should be looking for ways to incentivize folks to actually want to spend time in their office. Now, I decided two days a week because one day a week, my entire staff and I meet. And then the other day is normally a council day and I'm in council most of Wednesday. Sometimes Wednesday morning, sometimes all day Wednesday. So, uh, so that's how I have actually adapted to this kind of new, uh, work environment. But we should be actually having childcare at all, all city employee buildings so that, again, it's a, it's the, one of the biggest barriers to working people being able to thrive in this city. And you want to ask me the one about downtown as well? The whole downtown, how does it recover? You know, when I moved here, uh, seven nights a week, you could go listen to live music from world-renowned musicians all over the city. Today, musicians cannot afford to live in the city of Portland. Creatives have been priced out. And I would love to see us turn many of the vacant buildings downtown into sixty percent area median income, commercial space and residential space. Because we talk a lot about the high cost of rent and houselessness, but we don't talk about how we are pushing small businesses into collapse and with no supports at all. And so, uh, and it's only gotten worse since COVID. And those are the people that have really, I mean, when you think about struggling small businesses, it's the twenty and less employees are the ones that are really struggling. They've always been the lifeblood of this city. So I'm hoping that we will be able to partner with some of the downtown landowners and have them work with us and not just assume we're just going to give them a bucket load of money to do stuff, but that they will work with us to actually make that conversions happen.
The idea behind the small donor program is that candidates agree not to take The idea behind the small donor program is that candidates agree not to take big contributions from someone who may be trying to influence them for their own interest versus the overall interest of Portlanders. How do you square your acceptance of this drastically reduced rent with that overall principle?
Yeah, it's a fair question in this context. So throughout the campaign, we were offered numerous opportunities to have space for our campaign office. And we always applied the lens of what is permissible under the program as we understood it. Well, it was permissible under state law as we understood it. We passed on the first three opportunities. In a meeting with Jordan, he brought up this proposal of the space across the street that had been vacant for, I think, two years at the time. And we looked at it, we looked at state law, we looked at the city program. We felt like the city program didn't really address the scenario clearly. It talks about what is a contribution, but it doesn't really define that in a way that provided real guidance on our question. The reason the question's complicated, right? Folks were listing property in 2020 at X per square foot. They're getting zero interest. And so what is the real fair price of that space at this point in 2022? And then you throw in some other variables like, you know, you rent space downtown. You typically get, if you're renting for five years, you typically get a year of free rent. You get substantial tenant improvements. Right now tenants won't even look at stuff that doesn't have secure parking. Well, none of those variables were true in our scenario. We're not getting tenant improvements, we weren't getting free rent. The parking we have is not secure, it's out in the open. So how do you take what is going on in the marketplace where you have stated prices? But reality is no one's buying it anywhere close to that and there's very little activity. How do you determine what's the fair rent in that situation? We looked at a provision under Oregon Campaign Finance Law that says in certain circumstances of a vendor gives you something at cost, it doesn't even, it's not, it's not only permissible. It's not even disclosable, it's not reportable, it's not considered an in-kind reportable transaction. We relied on that. Right now, the small donor program disagrees with our assessment. And so, you know, I looked at it as a commercial transaction, a straight up trade. He has excess space, he cannot get people much, to rent, much less even look at it right now. We had a short-term need and, you know, that's how we squared it. It has been a distraction, I mean, it's unfortunate. The good news with it is it has brought some light onto the real challenges under the hood of downtown. You simply can't rent retail space on first floors right now at anywhere close to what you could before. That is, if you can even get people to look at it. I mean, it's, we have a broken market right now. So I needed to be downtown because I'm an East sider, wasn't spending enough time here. And it's shed some light on the challenges down here. But, you know, I, we tried to enter into the, as best we could, a transaction that was permissible under the rules as we understood it.
But in terms of due diligence, because I think of course, this is what voters are considering as they look at candidates. Is there more that could have been done in terms of asking ethics commission posing the question specifically to elections officials as opposed to taking your own read on some of that?
Yeah, that's also a fair question. We've had a number of conversations with the small donor program on questions related to fair market value. So we, we played through some very specific scenarios with them over the full year that we've been involved with the program. What happens if you sell books as a campaign, right? Which is a lot of what campaigns do. How do you determine the percentage of that that is a contribution versus just paying for fair market value? We often would get conflicting and inconsistent feedback from the small donor program on those type of questions. We never really felt we were getting clear answers. In some cases, we would go directly to state law and bring that back to small donor on how you reconcile that. So I think when we looked at the lease, we had gone through that a couple of times where we had often conflicting feedback from the small donor program on fairly straightforward questions around fair market value. We ended up not doing something specifically because we couldn't get a clear read from the city on it. The other thing we looked at is do we sell T-shirts or do you just give those to volunteers? Do you sell lawn signs or do you give them to? You do it through the campaign or not? Well, we just, it was too complicated to figure out in the city, so we just, we, we give it away. We don't sell it, we don't monetize that at all. So I think when we looked at the lease, it was after going through that process of fatigue and trying to work out with the city what constituted fair market value. The other piece, we didn't know that it would go on for this long. I didn't know that I was going to prevail in the primary. He had established a PAC that in the springtime that I thought might be taking over the space. So I, we didn't know necessarily it would be for an extended period of time when we entered into it originally.
And Joanne, a question for you. In your tenure, you've made some controversial statements, particularly with regard to police. There, the firefighters union as well declined to endorse you in favor of your opponent. Are you concerned that your, your leadership has been divisive? And that you are contributing to some of the poor morale that people are saying is part of what's happening at the police bureau?
Well, I can tell you that no, I don't believe that I've been divisive. I think that the reason why my opponent was supported by FIRE was that I refused to move forward a proposal to pay double overtime for firefighters who were being forced to work overtime. The bottom line is that will have an impact on the general fund, A, significantly so. And B, it will have an impact on every labor union contract we negotiate in the future. And I've, in my short time at the city, I've seen how making massive promises to police impacts morale of every other city employee. Almost no other city employee got $25,000 bonuses or a significant pay raise. And now we're going back telling all the rest of city employees, sorry, we don't have any money. And so that I think is part of the conflict. Does firefighters deserve to be able to make significantly more money? Absolutely, they've been on the front line of every crisis we've had in the last three years, right? But I also have an obligation to not just look out for the bureaus in my portfolio. Because my constituents don't live in my portfolio, right? They, it's the whole city, it's not just what is on my plate. And I know that we're about to start negotiating with firefighters next year on their new contract. And so I know that every decision we make as a city council has an unintended consequence. If our, if the city council is not looking at how this impacts the entire city and entire city's budget. Now, none of us are surprised the police didn't support me. But I can tell you that I have a great relationship with both Chief Lavelle and Deputy Chief Fromm. And in fact, I will tell you Deputy Chief Fromm is a breath of fresh air. Because he is the easiest person to get accurate information out of when you're asking for information from the police bureau. And I, I know officers at all levels of the police bureau. Some are better than others and some are, some can't wait to see the transformation happen. Where others are just kind of waiting to see what's next. As you saw how we failed miserably in hiring a civilian training dean. I had already laid out how I thought we should have hired for that position. And of course, the mayor's office as the police commissioner and our human resources totally disregarded what I knew would be a, not a positive outcome. And sure enough, it took what, less than a couple hours after the offer was, was made to have it pulled back. I'm, I'm told that that's going to be, that application is going to go live again. I think the challenge right now is we're trying to do so much in placing without a vision of what we're building, right? We're talking about all these like pilots and we need people, but what are we building when we talk about community safety? And, and for me, that has really been challenging. But that's why I think neither of them were supported. And again, they supported anybody.
And one last question for you, Joanne. More than half of the calls that Portland Street Response crews are sent on are canceled on scene due to the subject no longer being there or similar issues. Should the program scale back the neighborhoods where it's being deployed in order to offer better coverage and meet expectations of residents that if they call for PSR, that someone will be able to arrive?
Well, see, as you know, we authorize Portland Street Response to expand citywide as of July 1st. But that didn't mean July 2nd. We were able to answer calls all over the city 24 hours a day for Portland Street Response.
And I'm sorry, it was July 1st? I thought it was March.
July 1st. No, I'm sorry, it was, it was the, it was the June budget that, the May budget that took effect July 1st. Because it's beginning the fiscal year, right? So, so we passed it and so then we started the process. And just like the police and fire can hire people overnight, right? Can't get equipment overnight, right? And so what we're doing is building this system. And that one of the early flaws I noticed was that the assumption by call takers were that Portland Street Response operated the same way that say the police or Portland Fire and Rescue operate, and they don't. Their task has never been to run from call to call to call. We're not building a system for them to do that. We're building a system so that they get, that people can get real care on the street when they need it, right? And so, no, we should certainly not be rolling it back. In fact, we are continuing to roll it out and I anticipate by the end of this year, that will not be an issue anymore. And that's why I need every two weeks with all the directors of the first responder bureaus so that I can work out the growing pains of this system. So for example, the police, when they use the 00 code, that means anybody and everybody come, right? We need help now. For Portland Street Response, they wanted them to use a code six. I said, why? Well, because if you, if you need a, an emergency response and then you can't use the one police use. Well, it's crazy, what do you mean we can't use the one police use? Right, so I got that one resolved, right? So, but again, it took, what I have learned in my time at the city is you can develop the best policy. But if you're not monitoring the implementation, it is very easy for it to go off the rail. And so that's why I'm making sure every two weeks I'm reviewing 911 calls. I'm reviewing who was sent on those calls, I'm reviewing wait times. Because I want to make sure that the promise that we made to the public, we will be able to keep, right? And so we're working out those kinks. Another example, Portland Police thought that Portland Street Response should only connect with the behavioral health unit within Portland Police Bureau. Well, those are the least likely officers they will encounter on the street. The officers they're going to encounter are the patrol officers. And so I made sure that we're going to train as part of our in-service training. We're going to bring Portland Street Response in to train patrol officers so they get to see them. They understand what their role is in the first responder system. And that they understand that if they need help, these are part of your, of your first responder systems, right? So I'd expect them to respond to PSR just the way they would for FIRE.
Thank you. We are out of time unfortunately, but I really appreciate, we really, really appreciate your coming in to talk to us, especially after having finished the city club debate. You had a lot on your plate today. But we will be in touch with any follow-up questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.